The public hearing for the solar energy bylaws. Today we have members of the planning board, members of the solar advisory committee sitting before you. And when you came in, there were three documents available for you to look at. The schedule for these regulations has changed. And two areas. We have a Phase One environmental site assessment, ESA, and we also have attached to that in the back is the payment draws, which the planning board can refer to. And then we have the bylaw itself. The text of the bylaw, if it exists with no mind screw or under it, it means it's as is. If the text is underlined, it means that that text was added and anything that's crossed off is clearly means that we are eliminating that text in that language. Just to let you know that we are, we have a citizen who is videotaping the meeting today. So if there, if you have any concerns about speaking with the video on, just let us know and we will ask him to turn that off. But otherwise, it will just continue to run.
And by that I mean, the town became inundated. We've had solar fields start going all the way back almost 10 years now, the golf course. At that time, they came forward, it was presented to the town, the applicant board, it was presented to the town, and we went forward that way. Bylaws we'll look at to see what was up and coming. The town was covered at the time, the best it could be, with what was going on. It was not an infestation of solar at the time. It's progressed up until you see what we have in town today. The board, the planning board, always sat in front of engineers, mechanical, solar, ground engineers, construction people. The last two years, we've sat in front of lawyers, lawyers, lawyers. And anytime an engineer would start, a lawyer would ask him questions or interject something else. Anytime the board tried to open up a dialogue, reference stormwater, reference runoff, reference ground sampling, reference depogphy, a lawyer would answer, an engineer would give an answer. We face more lawyers than we have engineers. We do not have the horsepower in this town, and neither does any other one in this state have the horsepower, the dollars and cents, to fight lawyers. We have politicians who don't take sides, who can direct. They don't take sides to help the towns. We've gone to the attorney general personally, as a board, and the attorney general's answers are consult with your legal counsels. Our legal counsels have never had as much problems as they have with solar. They have a young woman that we've met over the phone, I haven't met her unless someone else here has, or on the committee, that is trying her best. You look at other bylaws the towns are writing, they all have to be approved by the attorney general's office. Many of them at the end say, "Any actions taken, consult with your legal counsels." You look at the properties that are being used in town now, Warren was nothing but pastures. Pastures all over the place. Sylvia Buck can tell you all about it, the librarian who used to be here, and another gentleman in town. The photographs will show you. Seven farms on South Street, picture. The whole top of Foy Hill, a pasture, running all the way down to the intersection of Foy Hill and Town Farm Road, nothing but pastures. Secondary growth now. Those that own it are retired, some have passed away, some are left to their families and others have moved in and bought acres. When someone comes forth and dangles in front of you a catalog of gold, based on today's economy in the last few years, going to pay your taxes, going to give you quarterly payments to the lease of your land, or even buy land, they did in a few cases, and you're going to make money for 20 years, 25 years. I don't think too many people would pass it up. You could retire pretty damn early, couldn't you? Okay? For the rest of us, we sit here and we see this going on. So as a board, we try, with your input at public meetings, and over the past few years to get the bylaws adjusted to what's happening. And finally, we had some residents wake up, and they saw what was happening. I can't see it from my house. They can't see it from East Road. They can't see it from, I don't care, 3rd Street, 4th Street, anywhere. People don't get involved until all of a sudden you hear it's in your backyard. Well, they can't do that. How can you deny a person what to do with their property, first of all? How can you tell a landlord that they can't do with what they're property that they own and pay taxes on? Think about it, you can't, right? As long as it falls within the bylaws, in the state laws, or wherever it's live, White Lives is or whatever it may be within the citizens. So people decided, made decisions to work with solar. Solar is funded, as you all know, by whom? Federal government, go green. Who doesn't own a cellphone here? Thank you. Okay. I don't own one. A light can't live without it, most of you people can't live without it. Turn your lights on, turn your microwave on as you're driving home. Has your shopping list for when you go to the store, all your appointments and everything else. Go green. It's a wonderful thing, about solar. That's what's keeping it going. Every one of these fields that are existing now run out to the trunk line, run down the road, and out of town. None of you are getting service from these solar fields. No one. The only thing the town is getting from the solar field is the one on the landfill. And some people will say, "Well, we're getting the taxes paid." What has it done for us as a town? Your assessment values, right? This far, it's the assessor's office, our tax rates, have they gone down? So the solar companies come in, lease the property now, 25 years, and they come in with all the lawyers. We stood our ground thanks to you folks, and we did value with the lawyers. One man's decision ruled in favor of the applicant, not the town. Based on the information we had obtained from other agencies throughout, we had solid ground, and believe it or not, at the meeting we had with our legal counsel, they wanted us to fight it. Yet, for this board to fight it, it costs you money, okay? It costs the town money that we don't have. The board as a whole refused to fight. And right now, for those of you who were there the other day, we denied another solar company. They did not get the supermajority vote they got. You know what we got? Another lawsuit. I will stand my ground, and the board will stand our ground. Yet, folks, it's going to cost you in the long run. Where do we go? The committee was flawed, and I'm going to thank these people, hold tight to them. You have to write them down. Josiah Harker and Rachel Carney, Adam Lloyd, Kerry Schmidt, Rich Demetrius, Linda LaBach, Drew King. Here are others that were at some of the meetings, thank you, that have attended since evening. The majority of these people right here woke up and took more time than you people can imagine to come up with this bylaw and the amendments. The moratorium was passed. We could go, we got a memo from the attorney general's office that they did agree with the moratorium until May 31st. So we had that. These people met nightly, biweekly, upstairs, all around. They reached out to every, probably 351 of the cities and towns we have plus, reached out to everybody they could. The chief did his research, I'll get to that in a moment, and they came up with this bylaw. With this bylaw, it'll help the town. It still has to be approved by the attorney general, and I cannot honestly answer, as of 1:30 this afternoon, maybe Joyce Harker can. It was still in the hands of legal counsel, waiting for a final write-off and agreement on it. It goes to legal counsel, they review it, change the "it" to "I," the "but" to "we," or whatever the case may be. It has to be in their language that the attorney general will pass. That's how much it has to go through just to be presented to you folks. Once you present it, once it's signed off that way, and then the final safe course is the attorney general, like I said two moments ago. So all this is being put into a bylaw that, there's probably a lawyer or two here, or someone, we don't recognize all the faces. Applicants are now sitting and called the planning board office and wanting to find out when the moratorium ends. Mrs. Umpire has had calls come in. Applicants are already looking at other ways to get into town. Yet with this, and I'll let Joyce and the board go on with the facts for you, with this, it's more of a bite. And I said it at the last meeting here, there is no denial. That's a river in South America. Uh, right. Denial. There is no denial, folks. You cannot start a solar field. You can protect to a point. When that lawyer and the firm starts looking, they'll find ways around it. So every time we get phone calls in that office or this other, where someone's coming in with an application for what is known as an A and R approval not required for a parcel of land to be broken up, all we can see is more applications for solar, and there are different applications that may open the door to them. It is not, it is not a... 21 years ago, when I started on the board, I was town director. I dedicated 21 years to this town and you people to keep it a small town and grow in steps, not leaps and bounds. Right now, it is mayhem, because you just don't know who's going to do what, who wants to do something. And then a lawyer comes in and says, "You have to take this." Or an applicant comes in and says, "My lawyer says you have to take this today." What do you say? They did an outstanding job, and I want to thank each and every one of them because they're here tonight. The board wants to thank them, and you should thank them too. Because of the time they put in, what you have here, some of you will be able to review it and look at it at another time. If you pass the word around, people will know. Although, with this, this is a beginning to more bylaw changes and more avenues for us to try to protect you and the town. We don't have much to offer in this town. Major commercial properties are up on Pilchers, off Gilbert Road, owned by the Callahan Corporation, and Route 67. That's our commercial zone. You moved here, you have lived here for what? The quaintness of the town, availability to go east and west, and a good timeframe, right off the pike. Unfortunately, we don't have that exit yet. That would be nice. Many councils don't have one, my listen, some kind. You want to keep the quaintness, the school, the integrity of the town, and it gets torn apart. We try to bring it back together. They've done their share, they've done a Herculean share of getting this together with solar. What I'd like to do now is I'll stop here because you all know how I feel when the board comes. I have no problem standing up in front of anybody and commit myself to it, of the town. I'm going to let Joyce and the committee drive on from there. And I'd like Adam, Chief of Boy, excuse me, to explain the batteries, which are now the biggest, one of the biggest situations we have, that we're trying to, trying to get a handle on. And Adam will explain that, if you don't know what he means, but we'll get into that. Joyce, if you would.
So what do you do, a brief overview? We took the existing solar bylaw that we voted on last May, and as you can see, we enhanced it quite a bit. If there's any language that's been deleted, it's just been modified slightly and added onto extensively. Some of the things that we've done, just as a broad overview, is that we have requirements about the location that solar is allowed now. Before, it's anywhere in town you could install a solar set if you had enough land, and now we're restricting it to the commercial zone, and the...
Bill and all of that, yes. Which Bill was just speaking about, is a parcel of land that's, the mountain's over there. Yes, the parcel of land that is west of Gilbert Road. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so pretty much all of that land, and some. We have limited it to that because we have a number of concerned citizens that came to us who live in the world, and reported that they went to the world district so they wouldn't have light industrial espering. And so that is the significant, I think, the significant change that we made. We also have other changes as far as citing it. It can't be on steep or slopes. There's all of this, you can read the information. But we were trying to, again, listen to what the butters of existing solar had said and what their concerns are, and we tried to put all of that information into the bylaw to make them a little more user-friendly to neighbors as well as the landowners. And I guess one of the things that Adam was talking about is all of the solar arrays now are being, the applications that come in are coming in with battery arrays. And what happens is that during the day, when the solar panels are active, the batteries are collecting the energy. At night, they can dump that energy back onto the grid, whereas before they couldn't do that. Sounds like a great plan because the energy remains level, except that now our town has these arrays of lithium batteries that we have very little information about. And so Adam did some homework and he came up with these requirements of passive duty.
So some of the issues that we've seen with solar over the last few years, again, with battery storage as one of them, some of the things that we've experienced that we tried to address in this bylaw change was the responsibility of the owners of the property, regardless of whether one company or another, regardless if they change hands, the responsibility passes on to the next person. We've seen the original solar project that came in on the golf course, or these solar projects in general, in my opinion, they seem to be bought and sold numerous times in, you know, a year or two within its, you know, stage of build. And that inherently became a problem for us because very quickly we lose track of contact, emergency contact information. So one of the things we tried to do was to tighten those restrictions up to make sure that they were well aware of what the requirements were, as well as maintaining access. Because when one company comes in and builds it, they pass it off to another, what we've seen is that kind of stuff starts to fall from the wayside. So we're trying very hard to make sure that that stuff stays important, to make sure that the responsibility stays on the current owner to maintain the roads, to maintain the emergency contact numbers, so that if there is an incident, we're not chasing people around for hours and hours and hours trying to find someone to respond to the incident. The roads stay clear, they stay plowed. That's been another issue that we've had in the past. The budgeting identified, the safety identified, maintenance plans are dealt with regarding natural age growth, so that we can get trucks in and out, that kind of thing. The major changes that Joyce alluded to recently, the last few plans that have come through have been proposed battery storage. This is something we're seeing in this area for the first time. We're removing projects in the Commonwealth, as at this point, most of them, I don't even know any that are actually installed at this point. Most of them are proposed or in progress, which is where we are right now. This is a trend stricken from the west coast to the east coast. This is kind of what we see all the time, things, technology started west and they were slowly towards east. Our major concerns are obviously environmental, obviously health and life safety. If there's a fire, this bylaw addresses suppression systems, it addresses burns and containment within, for the actual battery storage. Everyone needs to understand where this is being pushed. It's being pushed from the state level, it's being pushed from the federal government. These companies are giving incentives to put these battery storages in. So we kind of have our backs against the wall in some ways when it's being pushed from, you know, from the Commonwealth and the Fed. So we try to make sure that these restrictions are put in there, and we do have some leeway. We have a project that's proposed right now where myself, it's a mobile jurisdiction, I'm also from another fire, we've got together, we look at distances, where we want the battery storage, if we want the battery storage, what, you know, what kind of suppression system would be in there, everything. So these are all things, the technology changes, we're trying to stay up with that to make sure that it's safe. It's safe for the people that are abutting the property, it's safe, evacuation points are safe, that, you know, and that we have the emergency contact information to be able to get somebody on site if we need to. So a lot of that, all that stuff has been invested, and I'm comfortable at this point to say that we have, you know, I think we've taken a lot of steps in this bylaw to be in the right direction, to be able to, you know, protect ourselves as best we can against, as the chairman said, you know, the liability and the lawyers that come with these projects, unfortunately, so.
Oh, and also, ultimately, we're trying to preserve property owners' rights, even the butt of the property owners' rights. And I also want to say that Christopher Ishai, and Jane, and John Freeman have also been to pretty much every meeting, in fact, this staff meeting, well, not every meeting, so I just don't want to let them go on. Does anybody have any questions?
Do we know what's driving the battery concept? Because as a homeowner, you store it so you can use it when the system's not generating. But if you're selling excess power to the grid, you're selling excess power to the airplane.
What's driving it is the smart program. That's the program all these solar fields are being built under where the incentives come. And it's from the state level, the state's offering the incentive to all these solar fields, so if they put the batteries in, they give them more money.
And then the reason for that is the fluctuation of daytime versus nighttime power.
Yeah.
When the sun is out, National Grid, or wherever, whatever district you're in, National Grid is receiving all of this extra power, and at night, they have to shift over coal or biomass, or whatever else, whatever other source they have. And they wanted, and it's a lot of extra work for them to start managing the fluctuations of power that's coming out there. So they wanted to be able to live that out of it.
There also is not enough capacity right now. There's not enough off-takers. We have a tremendous saturation of solar in our area, but not in the off-takers.
Correct.
And the grid isn't in a position where it can push it far enough, so that's the other reason, is to store it, to try to dump it at night, so they're not ever used for it.
Four years ago, the planning board was contacted by a company in California. The company in California wanted to know what our regulations were on battery storage. Whoa, that was the answer. What are you talking about? Well, looking into that, they started out there in those deserts and everything else where you see on Discovery and the other programs, reference solar, energy itself, and they store thousands and thousands of megawatts and whatever else in battery boxes spread throughout these massive fields. And as power is needed or lost, or needed again in Northern California, or Southern California, or whatever, the grids can draw from these areas. So there's always energy being stored. Energy that's being used can be transferred anyplace by grids. Now, we have a couple of grids here in Mass, and they all have their little areas or big areas that they can draw from, but right now, the one in Palmer, the sub, excuse me, the one in where a substation is maxed out. Take a ride up to Little Rest Road, the substation there. I mean, how many solar fields do we have pumping into that one, where is it all going? As I said earlier, it's not coming to town. It goes out where needed. So now, the batteries have reached here. Adam and his reaching out, there was still regulations on, there aren't, excuse me, aren't regulations on what's in them. The engineers that we spoke into two weeks ago, engineer couldn't even describe. You've got shells of batteries, lithium batteries. How many? If you've got four megawatts, or 3.5 megawatts, or kilowatts, whatever the heck they're going to have there, how many lithium batteries are in this container? A container is about the size of a, what I used to call a Kynex container, all right? Metal containers that are towed around with a backup truck, come in on ships, all right? Of all these. One of them or two of them can be in each field, depending on the size of the field. Our electrical engineer here in town, who does our wiring inspectors and inspection, Scott Mansfield, when I brought the question up to him, he just started scratching his head. He didn't know what to hear either. Okay, so homework has been done. If an engineer cannot give an answer when asked publicly, how this is, how it is stored, what is in the inside of there, they have no idea because it's the electrical part. Adam, excuse me, Scott reaches out to them, he does the inspection and the sign-off on a field, yet, you just don't know what is going to happen. And no one can say, folks, as I've said before, and you'll hear me say again, maybe, no one knows what's going to happen with these solar fields. They've never been in existence longer than 15 years. The way they're coming about, they're being pushed in. They're gone, the applicants are gone, other people are gone in this field system. No one knows what the effects are down the road on abutment. 10 miles out, 15 miles out. What the battery box, the life expectancy of the battery box. Life expectancy of a solar field is every time a solar pin... Life expectancy of a solar field is every time a solar panel or whatever expires by manufacturing, they can just go nowhere.
So to address some of those issues, the bylaw does have language in it. When the site will be decommissioned, we will be requiring soil tests to check for certain elements. And we'll also be requiring somebody to be on site to make sure that the panels haven't been broken and to check the battery deinstallation. Whenever they need to replace batteries during the life of the project, they need to check in with Adam and also, as well as the planning board, just to let us know that they're replacing the batteries and to ensure that the disposal is on site.
Another thing we have to really touch on, but it's a big change in this, is this bylaw requires a cash bond for decommissioning. So whatever requires, if it passes, and I'm saying we, the town will require solar companies to put enough cash money into an account to cover the removal, free removal of any solar installation. Another element that they have to take out. And every five years, they have to go over the estimate of the cost to decommission and up to the cost situation and such. And it's lacking in the bond you have to pay yourself in addition to the budget. So that's another real big thing in this.
In the past, there have been construction bonds taken out, taken through the, even though they've been covered. But those LLCs go away, and then another LLC comes in. So there's a municipal bond, the decommissioning bond. There's no money to take these down when they're in their life.
Or the bond goes away when the LLC goes away. But if it's just insurance bond, the company's still paying. The chairman couldn't remember if he had a bond or not in the town. If we make them put cash in the batteries, then we have that cash that's leaving. If they disappear, the cash is still there. The town can use the money to take the solar.
Can you go over the problems that Barry, Chelton and other towns have had with the declaration of them being tax exempt and the towns having to pay back the money that they've gotten? I don't know if everybody's aware of that. I just found out not too long ago.
Yeah, we're aware of that, but there was nothing that we could put in the bylaw. It's something that we, it's not anything the bylaw could address. So that really is...
Yeah, we do have agreements with them, pilots, tax agreements. The towns that, though it had troubles, weren't doing pilots. They were charging personal property tax. We don't need that here, so I think we should be fine.
So there's no more pilot agreements? It's all done on the personal property?
That's a separate thing from this, but yeah, we still do pilots.
The state, the state didn't like pilots. The state said, you're not taxed, you're personal property. And then the courts didn't uphold the tax agent. So we have a top end here.
So what will they be taxed as?
Well... Well, there's still taxes to solar farms. It's an annual payment that they pay per the pilot agreement. So we agreed that, so we totally agreed upon a agreement between the solar company and the town. And typically, up until now, everyone's done by the megawatts. We have a team, you know, with batteries, so it's still working out now. I don't know where they're going to go. The ones we've had in the past that have batteries and those are agreed on 16,500 per megawatt per year for each field. That's what our current agreements are. But we are looking at what changes are necessary right now. Because the new battery, that's the asset that's from some of the solar companies. It's over a million dollars in battery right now. So they're going to be charged more. There's going to be some accountability for that. They're going to make more money. They're generating more and they're restoring it and releasing it at times that they're not typically releasing it. So those things need to be considered. So anyone else have people to figure on that? Where to go with that? I don't know.
So just to let everybody know, we have all known chief, the boy. Rachel works as the assistant assessor. Kerry Schmidt is in the tax office. We are on conservation, Richard and I are on conservation. And then we also had members from the community that sat on our commission. So we were relatively well represented for the town offices.
Mr. Nickerson, you have any questions, sir?
I have two or three, but I'm not going to stand. I think the biggest problem we had of cities and towns in Massachusetts and other states, if you look around, the answer's right here right now. Nobody really cares unless they're involved in making some money or if they don't have anything to do, they might go to a town meeting. The problem is getting all this information out. I know you're trying, but if it doesn't get out, we're going to have a small town meeting and they're all going to vote for maybe a larger project, such as a school or something like that. What I'd like to suggest to the planning board, the planning board should be now opening up the master plan. You're over the 10 years that you should have had. And at least get something in there about this. People look at the master plan, developers look at master plans, and we haven't done anything. We're way past our group time.
To answer that, Don, about six months ago, Bill Scanlon came up to me, we spoke about it. And that was the biggest thing he brought up. And that is something that is being addressed right now through him, by myself, to getting that going before this fall starts. Yes, to answer that. It is just a little over 10 years, as you know. And pretty much it had been followed by the town. Those of you who have a copy of it can review it and see where we are. There are a few copies left, I'm sure, that can be got to the court's office. Yet it is time to have all this done simply because of how pace has just increased by 10 times in different areas. You're right. Your next question, go ahead.
Is solar, solar fields classified by the size of them? Large arrays compared to an eight panel family backyard?
Yes. Yeah. So in the, I have to use my glasses. So a large solar energy facility has a nameplate capacity of greater than 100 kilowatts or one, what's that?
One megawatt.
Or one megawatt. And everything else was called underground. And this bylaw does not address anything smaller. So this bylaw...
Yeah. For a person who wishes to put them next to their home, for a person who wishes to put them on the roof, that's up to them. This exactly directs, directs on the back on the definitions, live solar facilities over. That is what they wish to come into towns to put in at this time.
If you have a solar facility with 100 panels and you're only using that power not for resale, but to run your business, whatever that is, run your farm, run your, that's not regulated under this bylaw.
I think my final question is, you talked about what happens after 20 years. And what happens when a company goes under and just walks away? What recourse do we really have because we have no money in the bank? Why don't towns have the money so they can at least invest it? Doesn't the guy who puts up the golf course, in fact, is the golf course still operational right now?
Yes, there it is. It always has been. It never shut down within the transfers. It transferred quite a few times. And the facility never shut down. It was the taxes, the dollars and cents and who's in charge. That was the issue, sir.
All right. When that transfer took place, was there a whole new renegotiation? What are the obligations at that point? Can we force them into doing more than they had when they first hooked it up?
Again, I'll let Joyce answer it because they did a good job in trying to cover that.
About the decommissioning piece? Is that, okay. So currently, we have, the golf course is three solar projects. Next to that, Buildmore Property, two solar projects. So all to get, and there's different projects around town. So currently, we have permitted nine solar projects. Eight of those are currently installed. And we have some version of a paper bond for all of those. And that, in the range of about a quarter of a million dollars, give or take. And from anything that's going to be permitted in this bylaw, that'll be a different story. But we still have another six or seven in the queue to be permitted before this bylaw goes into place. And so what happens with that is up to the planning board and the selectmen. Is that correct? I'm looking at you, John.
Yeah. I will be.
I'm here to get our information, right?
Well, nothing is probably placed...
To decommission, Don, to decommission, Mr. Nickerson. That's going to be a problem. X amount of dollars Rachel in the assessor's office has been, I'm surprised she's still here, sitting down here tonight, believe me, sir. She has been in contact with, throughout the state, with other towns. She had an investor come in about decommissioning. The guy, the front one, all these investors. These guys have no darn idea what they're investing in other than they want a return. He came in and was addressing with Rachel about the pilot program and our decommissioning fees. Don swissed that. Thank you, you're not here tonight, but thank you. She got on the bandwagon with us, okay? Rachel and her and Kerry, sitting to my right. These people reached out to as many people as they could through the committee and through the assessor's office. Because what happened over in Chelton, what happened down in Oxford, and they're waiting for a decision by the Supreme Court to come back. And everybody in those towns is sitting there going, if it comes back, it's going to bite us big time. There'll be money owed back to these facilities. To decommission a fee, I'll look at Tom. If the town takes the responsibility, Tom, the highway boss right there, if the town takes, if it falls on the town's responsibility, we have to hire experts in decommissioning of solar. Now, I don't know where they are. I don't think there are too many of them yet because not many of them have decommissioned. What do you do with the panels, Don? What do you do with the bolts that have bolted to the ground? What do you do with all the cables, underground cables? What do you do with 35, I better go bigger, folks, of 150 acres of concrete? Because that's what that ground is going to turn to. I don't care if they put down fescue grass in the woodchips long from the chippers or whatever woodchips, grinders, the stump grinders. That soil is not soil anymore. It's concrete and locks for generations. And who's going to take it where? You think ABC on the other side of the intersection of 32 and 9 is going to collect all that stuff? What special site in Montana quarry, 50 miles into the ground, are we going to have to truck all this stuff to? Is it as it is?
That's my next question.
By God, Don, I'll tell you the answer. No. That's what China's telling us.
There isn't one place in the United States currently that'll take the panels.
Okay, well, Rich thought, found something else. Great. How many panels are they going to take down the road at the end of 20 years?
That's a big problem. We addressed that with the Department of Energy. We asked them what the state of Massachusetts is doing as far as preparing because all these fields have been done all at the same time and there's going to be millions of panels at once that are going to come. And their answer to us was, we haven't even looked at it.
So where is it leaving, guys? Don, right, I'm sorry.
If, if and when some incident comes along and they finally declare the hazardous, will chapter 21 D cover this?
That's one question that a good friend of mine is developing a solar field and spoke to a lawyer about it. And I've always been under the assumption that the landowner was going to walk away from it because it's leased land and the town is going to be held responsible. This attorney seems to think that it would become a 21D. There are hazardous materials in these panels. If they're broken, there's hazardous materials inside. They give you the MSDS sheets for the outside of the panel, which is non-hazardous, but inside is hazardous. So there is a hazardous building. It will become a 21D. And the problem is if somebody walks away from it and the invasives take over, these things have to be decommissioned by EM. You can't go in with excavators and start tearing stuff out because it's hazardous. You can't break the panels on the ground. So it could become a bigger problem than we think. People just walk away from it.
The reason I ask that, Bill, is the fact that, as you know, many, many years ago, the town warned, all got together and fought a company from California, hazardous waste.
IT?
IT Corporation. And we were fortunate, under 21D, to get all the experts, legal minds and financial people we needed from the state to pay for it. We flew out to California, we looked at the facility. All that allowed us to make a scoping document, which the town has. The town clerk was having a lot of them somewhere. I know I've got a couple of them. That may give us some guidance if you even reviewed it and looked at it if you had a chance.
Everybody, it can give us guidance because it's something that led up to a point that the town was protected to. Guidance, as Rich just said, I think I heard him say, his lawyer thinks.
Yeah.
Okay? No one has the answers to these folks and it's very hard for us. Rich reaches out, as I said, everybody here reaches out as far as we can to talk to people. There is no answer because no one knows. So as long as we sit here tonight and everybody else in town, we've got the panels here and no one knows what's going on and happened down the road. You can hypothetically come up with all kinds of facts and figures and diseases and bug infestations if you want, but no one can give you an answer that says, this is going to happen and this is how it's going to be treated. It's going to be special people, special companies certified, trained to do something. And they don't have one yet. They're not even looking into it because they don't even really care, folks. Politicians don't care. They make their money. They'll appease everybody and that's it. When it comes to action on the floor, a statement was made that for the past three years, we've been trying to get something going. Well, if you're representing your constituents, you're not doing a damn good job because the towns are getting so far left behind. Rich, go ahead. You got it, Ford.
First, thank you to everyone who put their time, effort and personal love for the town to, like, applaud everyone for that. I'm returning the bylaw maintenance for vegetation. Once installation is done, is that going to be used as bio potash or roundup? Are the conditions set on, or going to be set on type of application? I'd like to, farmers that have said that in some situations, aerial application, threatening to organic foxes and moor.
So there are, within the fenced-in area where the panels are located, they will not be using any pesticides or any chemicals in there because it damages the panels. So there's a little bonus there for us. So that is, and they don't even really want to spray outside. They're going to come in and mow two times a year and that's it. So generally speaking, they plant grass or meadow underneath the panels. They cut as many trees as they can without hitting the conservation jurisdiction. And they plant low, anything low shrubbery around. They don't want to do any maintenance outside the fence. It costs too much money for them. And only inside the fence, they're going to plant something that they can mow twice a year and that's it. So they have a maintenance, operation and maintenance plan that they submit to the planning board and also to conservation if they go before conservation. And that plan talks about everything that they have to do, whether it's monthly, it's usually biannually. For the first couple of months, it's monthly. And they come in and they clean out the stormwater basins and check the whole entire site, make sure the fence is intact and it hasn't been knocked over or disrupted. And they mow. And then they take care of anything that they need to. They'll come in and plow the roads in the winter if necessary. I don't know if people are actually doing this, but that's at least is what is in the operation and maintenance plan. Um, I don't know if people are actually doing this, but that's at least is what is in the operation and maintenance plan.
That's also included in one section of the bylaws that we'll be moving on?
Yes, we do. Uh, we actually have, we, we, we've signed, we have Mass General by Massachusetts, that's the site control line.
We toughened those, those restrictions too, to make sure that they were, you know, that there were avenues that we could explore and, and possible finds that we could, because if they weren't doing things like that, which is what we've seen in the past. So if those things were addressed and to Nick's point, uh, we did kick that can around with regard to what happens if down the road. And there are provisions in the bylaw that will allow us to continually address changes with regard to financial security with these sites. So fifteen years down the road, if it is deemed a hazardous material, that's gonna change the whole game. And that means that those adjustments are gonna have to be made. So there's also provisions in there that we did discuss. There are some unanswered questions like Rich has alluded to from the state and other authorities. But in our bylaw, that was addressed, that it, it will be continually looked at in case those changes in financial, uh, you know, needs be made or payments need to be made to the town to address issues like, you know, a potential hazardous material or something.
Is the fire department capable of handling the lodge looking fire right now?
So the short answer to that is no. So that is why, you know, and I gotta tell you, it's not just a warrant thing. There's not a fire department out there unless you're at Westover Air Force Base to have the full capability of doing that. That is why we have to look very carefully at suppression systems. How they're designed, the racking system within the, the containers, uh, make sure they're encapsulated either with a berm or internally within the system like some of the ones that are being closed now. So those are things we're looking at to make sure that those issues are addressed. So the suppression systems have to be not only higher code, but, you know, I don't wanna say more importantly, but even before that, the wind code comes into place. So that's something we work with the building department on, uh, because it actually falls under the building code prior, you know, for does the, you know, the P A. So those are all things that we're actually looking at. If it was a container that was full of batteries with no suppression system at all, absolutely not. We don't have the capability of doing that. That's why the suppression system is only for.
If the bylaw doesn't pass, the county, none of this, none of this stuff we're talking about.
I, I would never approve a battery storage container without a suppression system. So, you know, because I would never wanna put us behind the eight wall for, you know, in any situation.
And it's a sign that's in trend, uh, by Mass Code right now.
That's incorrect. So each one of them, I mean, again, these are the first times these are coming out. And even, and I think that the, uh, planning board would agree that the technology is changing so tremendously fast that a lot of the ones that come before the board, they don't even wanna give you that answer yet because they haven't decided on what type of battery they wanna use. So you could ask them and they're not gonna, not that they're purposely being, you know, not in front about it, but they might not even know what their, their engineers are still going over that. So there's constantly, things are changing. Last couple that have come out have little to no liquid inside the battery. So the containment side of things is, from my perspective, a little bit safer. Uh, it's better. However, given the age and given the type of battery they use, that's all is part of the finding a suppression system that's gonna encapsulate and be able to control whatever material may be in there.
Richie, I did you from Pelvador Extension. My question about the batteries is, 'cause I'm concerned, you know, we're rural, we only have one way in. Um, with the batteries, if you weren't to get a suppression system in a container, okay? A lawyer fights you on it and says, no, not required, don't need to do it, um, you'd be an accessory. Okay? So they get it in there, no suppression system, thousands of batteries. What's gonna happen if that goes out?
Well.
What happens with the community?
Like I said, hopefully we never get to that point because I can tell you that, again, I would never approve that and I know the planning board would never approve that. If we had to get into a litigation situation and we had to fight that out, then, you know, in the directions we have to go, you got, you lost that battle for any reason, we would have to resort to a plan B. I mean, you would. I mean, you would have to, uh, you know, work that out somehow. I mean, I am obviously concerned for any residents that is in the range of a potential small pool or anything like that. You know, we would have to come up with a, a pre-command for an incident. But hopefully we never get to that point, uh, only because, and I say that only because the companies that I have worked with recently with the battery storage, I will say that they have been pretty, uh, you know, they've willing to work with us. And I think that there is, there wasn't, hasn't been one yet that has proposed anything like, oh, suppression system. I will say that right off the bat. So again, I mean, these containers are falling under the building code. So I don't see that as a, as, as something that's going to drastically affect us because it's been ruled that they do fall under that. So I don't see a way they can get away with that. There's a perfect example, if you folks, when you do leave here tonight, if you look out here, there's a storage container directly up here. These are the types of things we're looking at. This is a very basic one. It's not a, it's not a encapsulated one in the sense that it's ready to control spills or anything like that. But basically, for lack of a better term, they look something like that with an internal, uh, capture system or something like that. So I don't foresee that as going to be a problem. I'm more, in this particular situation, this is the one I was referring to, where we're, we have a, a proposed, uh, solar array on a dead end road. And to me, that was more problematic than any of the other ones we had seen. Because if there was an issue, they had these proposed, uh, storage facilities right on the road. And how can we get residents safely in and out if there's an incident? So we made them push them back, uh, to a, an area that we felt was safe. And we've been guaranteed in this particular instance that they will have a full suppression system that will need full code. We haven't seen all the specs on it yet, but, you know, that's where we, how we handle this one and that's how we're gonna handle ones in the future.
Thank you very much. You're welcome, Chief.
Just bring it up.
This one's just over, checking the narrative there.
Uh, Matt, you're illustrating from our commercial district. Could you put that on the selectmen's website so everybody in town can see this?
There, the, I was gonna say, the planning board has that on their site already.
With?
They have the zoning map.
Right, but it's your, this is your, where you're going. So when you go on the town website, right there, right there on the homepage, this is where we're going. I mean, this is a videotape that should have been hyped. I think this should have been videotaped.
We could report it out, yeah. Well, you know.
That isn't it. We, we have a paid access community in our town.
You work it.
And I think you should have been here. So I think the next thing is to put that on the town website. So when you click on the town website, right there on the homepage, you see it and everybody in town understands that we're giving up our only commercial district for this.
Okay. Mike, Pete, go ahead, you got the floor.
No, that's, it, it just, I think it's important, but it should be televised, important. When you do a sudden change, this is vast.
Very good. John?
I have a question on the, uh, the Jones and their twelve point five.
Twelve point five, John?
Twelve point three point five. It just states that, uh, approval of a binder has to be available at the time of application. What about after application? I mean, fifteen years down the road, this is, this is.
That's not, that's not supposed to be decommissioned and shut down.
That's not decommissioned binder, that's a construction process. So when you build a project, a, a project is by tractor, I have this quote binder and I have liability insurance. And that's all that's, it's not a decommissioning by side.
Well, the decommissioning, the decommissioning is in the back and it is under, uh, twelve five two. Twelve five, just continuing to decommissioning and abandonment. Here's quite big there.
Those are two pages beyond, two, left and right.
And then it's in the end, and then there's financial shirt, which is twelve five four, that talks about the cash line.
You just went a mile and a half, boy, what's the dollar?
So what we have is, um, a hundred thousand dollars per megawatt or, um, they have.
So, uh, it's two fronts, bro. Um, there's a, a hundred thousand dollars per megawatt is a starting point. Another thing they must produce is they gotta produce a complete spreadsheet of construction costs. Because the decommissioning is gonna be in a separate construction project in itself. Everything has to be taken out, all the stormwater conditions have to be taken out, removed. Uh, the whole last thing has to be graded. So they, they provide us with a complete construction spreadsheet of all the costs from permitting to final. That's gonna be peer reviewed by, uh, professional construction estimating companies. Whichever is the higher cost, whether it's that or the hundred thousand dollars per megawatt, that's the one that will, will be, will go with. So they produce construction documents, they present, we have a peer review, the planning board will have a peer review. Probably they would review the numbers to make sure they're pretty accurate. If they came in at a higher amount than a hundred thousand per, per megawatt, then that's the number that we use. And then every five years, they have to submit new construction, all those, uh, construction documents have to be updated with current pricing. And it gets looked at again. And if, and if the, uh, costs exceed what's in the, the, the amount, then they have to, uh, come up with the extra money to meet that every five years.
I just have to work in the glass industry and I know to swallow our waste gas, it has to be disposed of. Try to get it in the void, that's a piece of it. So anything that comes in contact with glass, different, different, actually, has to be disposed of. It has to be disposed of.
Well, that's why we did it this way because instead of the blanket, the megawatt, because each field is gonna be so much different and so it's not really a fair assessment. Um, and that would cover the, because we, we also ask where the, um, where the panels will be going. They have to supply us the location and the name and everything else in there so that it's documented so that we know they do have accurate numbers on that.
Should also be noted too, that at the time of decommissioning, the way this bylaw, it's not like the town treasurer is handing over the company to um some all at one time, saying, here you go, when you're done, do what you gotta do, take the field down. That's not what's done here. It's got these stages so that it can be reviewed to make sure everything's done properly. The money is released in portions so that it's not a one time, you know, leave us a black mess and they take their money and run. That's not the idea behind this. It's, it's done in a way that it can be, uh, reviewed by our people to make sure that it's being done in stages. And then at the end, there's often, there's even money left over for a retainer, you can call it, for. Two growing seasons, I think. For two growing seasons to make sure everything is starting to come back to its natural level. And if it's not, there's money that we can, that the town can, can continue to hold back to make sure those adjustments are made if there's anything, trees, the planted trees die, uh, it's, it's being returned to its natural thing. So there's, that part of it was thought of as well, just so everyone was aware.
And the other benefit to doing that is these, these companies will have cash. Their cash is tied up in our town. So they, they, they're tied to us more than they are today. Today, they can sell it to you and then they're gone and everything disappears and there's no, there's no accountability. So this just gives, you know, they're not gonna be so apt to just run away when there's four million dollars back.
Question?
Don?
If, uh, some child, for instance, gets inside the solar field, kids are kids, and they get hurt, is it definitely positively the responsibility, the liability of the solar company or does the town get involved?
I really, you know, I'm sure we.
We're holding, we're holding a bond on them, Don, you know?
Well, that's, the bonds are for specific, it's, the, the decommissioning bond is specifically for decommissioning. Um, we, I'm, I'm sure we didn't think of everything. I mean, we really tried to say.
Well, I'm sure you did.
Everything, like, we have the property owner's rights and the town's rights, but I'm sure there are some things that, you know, that we didn't think of. That's why it's been a long process of people come to our meetings with ideas.
If you have, very hard to have their liability covered, if the third party covers, if someone gets hurt on the property, that's what it's covered for.
Right, like.
On the, on the, someone gets hurt, it's general liability.
Oh, right. There was a very, a very, you know, much property insurance would come, some kid fallen off a roof or something, you know.
Several of the sites as well that have proposed batteries. I mean, all the sites are wholly monitored in the sense that they're gonna know pretty quickly if their panels go inactive for any reason because they're losing money and they don't wanna do that. So, uh, they're gonna know pretty quickly that there's a problem. With the addition of the battery storage, these are very, these are high money installations. So that is, it takes a lot of money to, to install these battery facilities. And a lot of the ones that I've seen proposed now actually have cameras on site in the area of the battery storage because they don't want anything to mess around with. So that is a new trend that we're seeing with the battery storage areas as well.
I think a lot of tech there, man.
One, one, talking about the batteries. Are the batteries in the inverters or are the, where, where are the batteries in the batteries panel?
Separate. They're, they're inverters, you know, inverters that change from AC to DC.
Yeah.
The battery storage is a standalone unit by itself, uh, that has a, whatever, designed a racking system that holds an unknown amount of batteries, designed to a specific purpose, to be able to store a specific amount of energy. It could be one, it could be three, it could be, it, the ball depends on the, the size of the solar field and exactly what they're trying to do with it. But the inverters and the battery storage are definitely different. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, so with the batteries, um, there's so many unknowns, the like I started to see up there, um, possible contamination. I see language in here about how they're installed. Is there any sort of standardized, um, coding for the concrete? I see words that they have to be from the old, so there are no secrets to the ground. It's all groundwater and that.
So, yep, and, and we did discuss that again because there is a lot of unknown out there as this has been tricked over to us. Uh, you know, I've done our best to see how some of the west has dealt with it, but again, a lot of this, a lot of their installations are way out in the desert areas where there's no other residents, you know, residential properties around and everything. So here's a little bit different. So we put that language in there to generally protect us in the sense that it would get us to the point where we could work with the individual installers to make sure that we're all comfortable with whatever installation is going in. By putting the generalized language in there is the thought that we could then review it as the board, review it from the fire chief's perspective, review it from the, um, building inspector, planning board and stuff. So if they know that these are guidelines that they have to go by and then specifically what we're gonna require in town can come into play. You know, whether it's, uh, you know, a, a, a container that is, has an encapsulated unit inside, it's a tank within a si, inside a tank, those are the ones that I'm seeing the most. Some of them are a little different. And again, because the technology is constantly changing, we're seeing a whole bunch of different types of stuff out there. So it kind of is, this is meant to be the, uh, safe, uh, I guess the, the guidelines to follow until we get the specific information as to what direction we're going.
And that, that applies to like that too. That, that also applies to the sort of the whole data stuff. So we think that these solar fields, solar installations are, are, um, you know, twenty or twenty-five years. We don't know what the technology is gonna be in five or ten years. I mean, these things could be obsolete, you know, from before, before the decade is up, you know, not this decade, the next decade.
The answer to your question, Paul, we can't, uh, the law doesn't, we're not allowed to say specifically how they're gonna build these firms. You gotta do this material, this material, this material. We have to give general guidelines. Can't.
So like with building, building a, how, like, you're putting up a desk, you have to have a concrete here forty-two inches deep, that, that sort.
It doesn't tell you what type of.
No, it's a paper.
That's because that's under building code, that's a separate issue.
And then, what, another question, would be, um, frequency of inspection of the batteries? Is there a standard period that they have to be inspected every year or three years?
Well, I mean, they are gonna have, that's gonna be included in their operation and maintenance plan. So that's on them to, to bring forward to us. Uh, certainly there'd be an annual review from, and that's addressed in there from the, the powers that be. We, we've talked about having outside parties come in and help us with the inspection. Because again, this is a small town, and many of these small towns, it's very hard to, you know, I have the luxury of being full time in the town with a building inspector and everything. So we gotta figure out a way to combat that. So we did talk about that as well. But from, you know, they're gonna need, you know, uh, certainly a full review from the electrical inspector anytime. And at the very basic minimum, they have to meet at the building code requirements, which would require them to review the suppression system and everything. So they're gonna be in those, in those, uh, containers several times a year, I'll answer that question. Because just to follow the basic suppression system, they, they have, have to have annual inspections on that just, just by itself, so.
Rich, go ahead. Let's assume they know the root of P N G in California, Hoban, probably up because of the wildfire. Nobody's inspecting for six months because everything's in the courts. Who's gonna look in?
I mean, I.
Six months or a year, P N G is still building up.
The, the question there, would the, there is an abandonment clause in this?
Well, that's gonna go to the court then.
We have specific language in here for things that would be considered abandonment. And if, at that point, then the decommission would kick in, power it up directly, decommission.
And if they get to court open, I don't know, it's not true. I, I do this, you know, I have to be tested in court.
There, there's also provisions that are, you know, protected under the Commonwealth laws with myself, the building inspector, there are certain events, you know, where there's some trespass too. So if we need to get in and make sure there's safety issues that are being addressed or whatever. whatever, it's not like they could, you know, they're not going to charge, they can't charge us for trespass or anything. So those laws exist to give us authority to go in to handle safety concerns, or, you know, if we deem that there are safety concerns, we can go into the facility at any time, if appropriate.
Can I ask the chief one other question? Is there any consideration, or is there anything in the works to say that if a fire or a incident happens in there, and you go in there, and you don't have the right equipment, and somebody gets really hurt, is there a fallback, a liability against this company because we entered private property and put out a fire, or at their request did something? Where do we stand legally in that?
You're asking if one of the firefighters are hurt inside the facility?
Yeah.
Well, again, the firefighters are covered under state law, and would be under the town's insurance as well as, you know, we could go after them if there was a negligence issue or something like that. But I mean, if we're there, again, we're exempt from trespass, we're there under emergency circumstances, and, you know, it should be noted that each one of these facilities thus far that's been installed, you know, they are required to have a full walkthrough and review with the fire department prior to their operation. So we are in the facilities, we tour them, we go through safety, you know, safety checks on it. I know the ones of the proposed battery storage that I've talked to recently have, you know, again, that's its own little animal, but they've all made, you know, made it very clear that they welcome us to come in and make sure that we are, feel comfortable, God forbid there's an emergency. I mean, the reality is this, is that, you know, I'm not, you know, again, we have to look at this as a life safety issue from the fire department standpoint. So obviously, life safety meaning the citizens first, the foremost, and then the firefighters second. You know, if there's not a life safety issue, you know, and they need to replace their equipment because it gets damages or shorts or something, they're going to do that, you know? I'm not going to risk a firefighter for a water on electricity, it's the same, you know, we have standard operating procedures to make sure that nobody gets hurt. If it's a, if it's something that's actually burning, and there's a home hazard, or a health risk hazard, then we will move residents out of the, out of the area to make sure that, until that problem is mitigated, and make sure they're not affected by it. But, you know, you know, from a life safety standpoint, that's what we're going to do. If their equipment, you know, ends up being damaged, they'll replace it, it is what it is, you know? And none of us, none of these small departments have the ability to, you know, to extinguish a massive, you know, chemical fire or something like that, we just don't, none of us do. So that's why, again, I go back to the fact that the reviewing and the planning with regard to the suppression system and the containment is where I'm coming at it with making sure that stuff is where it should be.
I maybe have a question to the planning board. In the contract that we make with these companies, is there a clause saying if there's special equipment required by any of our departments, highway, or police or fire, that's needed, do they buy it, or are we stuck with it?
No, there's none.
Okay. Could we, could we do it?
Can it be done? Yes. Yes, it can be, at your point there. You know, highway's been up to a couple situations, addressing situations on the road and stuff like that, using our equip. We've addressed that with, I think, all the conditions in one of the facilities that we have just been working with, there to maintain this, these situations. We have thought about that, yet it has not been addressed, as I said, oh my God. Thank you for that.
It's good to have these ideas, because a lot of, a lot of problems and difficulties that you realize, it's in retrospect, you know, you didn't think this would happen, if you charged some people these properties, if that damage, you know, oh, I mean, I didn't hear it was, if that could happen, and now we're getting this disaster, so, you know, try even ahead of these kinds of events, but, you know, stuff is always going to sneak up, and, you know...
So, I guess, just to kind of reiterate what's been said, a lot of your concerns, like containment, whether or not concrete permeable, it can reach out, well, the planning board can address those in the orders of condition, those orders that say you can't build it unless it can perform this way. I'm not going to tell them what kind of concrete they have to use, but if we say it has to contain a spill without any leaching into the ground, then that's what it has to do. We depend then on our engineers, and our peer advisors, and our building inspectors, and so forth and so on, to make sure that that's being met. We're not the experts for that.
Right.
So a lot of these things, like what Nick just brought up, these are things, like Terry was saying in retrospect, we can think of everything that we can think about, they're going to think of one more thing. So when we're going over these special permit requests, that's the time for us to hear from all of you, because a lot of these things, and maybe not everything, but a lot of them, we can address in the orders of condition.
If you have another question?
We'll prove it, if you want to build it, you've got to do it this way.
I have one more question. My concern is also with the groundwater and how it gets into the wells. Because a lot of residents in the town have wells. Wherever, that's the only thing we have, we don't have a ton of water, so we're very concerned about any type of carcinogens, anything like that going off of these panels, before they turn into a big super font site or whatever, and getting into our wells. What protection do we have as far as that? Testing, anything like that, that that exists?
During the, my experience, we don't intend to have testing during decommissioning. We do have...
Just know the groundwater and monitoring, testing, training, like carcinogens, heavy metals.
During the, during the life of the project, we did not have that, only at the end, during the...
First question. Because, you know, a lot of people would get hurt, you know? If we wait till twenty-five years, there's going to be a lot of damage done for a lot of people.
So, one of the, one of the problems or concerns that we had, even testing the site at the end of the project, which will be expensive, is that it's, it's going to be a twenty-acre, fifteen to twenty to twenty-five acre site. How do you test twenty-five acres? Where do you go on the property to actually test it? And so there was a concept, I mean, the person who wrote it up for us is an LSP, and, you know, he came up with, we're just going to go take a bunch of samples and put them together in different areas. Still pretty expensive, so, and that was a sort of a challenge to begin with.
Well, one of the things I would recommend is probably to put a provision in there, where if a resident chooses, they can have their water sampled prior to a facility being approved, so you get a baseline, so later on, because water testing is pretty expensive. I just had it done for my well, because again, in a large facility that's going up by me, I want to make sure I have what happened before they...
That's what I was just going to clarify, you're talking about specifically testing fire tubes and the waters of...
Right. Because if that's not getting into our water, now we've noticed some health problems, throat cancers, things like that coming up around these facilities, at least we can say, hey, this metal wasn't in here before, these carcinogens weren't put in here before. So a good lawyer's going to say, how do we know it wasn't here before we start?
So you're talking about water testing?
Yes. Can planning do that with the orders?
No, conservation can.
No, we can't.
You can't, et cetera.
Water testing on site can be done.
Waterways, conservation, waterways, it's done.
To answer the question, it's an incurred cost that can be incurred by the applicant, prior to, and at the end.
Yes.
I'll try to get that, excuse me, the order, try to get that, but we're going to look at two other avenues, okay? We'll try to get that in. We haven't had a problem with that because, now, into that, we get all of you, none of these plants and none of these facilities have been as close to homes as they have been now, except for Jared Martin. I'll check with our peer review, and then I'll find out before the end of next week when you commit to the meeting and come to vote, okay?
Does the board have a problem with adding to the, to the bylaw?
Right now, as amendment? If you wish to amend it on the floor, I was hoping there to hold today?
Well, we didn't.
If you wish to amend something like this on the floor, on the town meeting, we can do so. Yes, in New Orleans, to have amendments on the floor, folks...
We have until Monday to amend it.
To have amendments on the floor, folks, to have an amendment, which Joyce was saying going Monday, I and the, and the committee are going to need your support, because when I stand up, and I'll use the word, I, when I stand up for the floor to amend this, I need the support of everybody here. We have to sit and talk with Nancy Cole, I will, and I have to sit and talk with your moderator. The moderator runs the show, prior to the meeting, he will be advised that there will be amendments to be added to this. He then has to grant the times, I spent an hour with Nancy talking about this today. If you wish to have that, the committee can take it under advisement, and the board and the three of us representing him tonight would be in agreement, can do so.
I think it would be a good idea.
Very good.
You will try it.
All, all costs, that a town wishes, to be, have a peace of mind for the abudders and the town people can be an incurred cost by the applicant. And if the applicant wants I do it, then I have to sit in front of the lawyer, let him know that these were incurred costs. The peer review is an incurred cost. Anything outside that, that the engineer wishes, that we're asking for now, to have a non, non-announced inspections, and then announced inspections on site, they're all incurred costs. They're paying for it, the town is not going to, okay? That's an understanding. You folks really don't understand how much money these people have. You don't understand. A project is maybe two or three million dollars, and you're looking at the battery blocks and stuff. What are they getting out of this, that they can come in with these dollars and cents and not worry about a thing, then walk away? How much money is going into their pockets or their investment? These people in Washington, Rich and all, these people in Washington DC and New York, these investors, they don't invest nickels and dimes, folks, look at the background of some of these people, read into them. These are multi-billionaires with more money than, geez, nails in the floor and watering the malls here. It's just amazing. And they have it. So they would spend it to get in, and they don't care. Rich, go.
Well, industries, Massachusetts, twice a year have to have backflow checked, they have the patron inspector coming, have backflow checked. But I don't think it's unreasonable to have the homes of these abudders have their water checked annually or at least once.
That's fine, that's fine, we'll, we'll try to get it in, if we can.
It's a real recognized cost.
If we can get it on the floor, we can amend it any time, Rich.
I just want to specify, it's not just the abudders that are directly close to these facilities.
Okay, I don't want to go, go ahead.
Because, again, a lot of areas share, share large water aquifers there, where, you know, you're taking from a large area, and if anything gets into that water, it's going to spread, or it isn't.
And, and that's an argument, one that we've had, the board has had, with, with a couple lawyers. And then, well, we're only responsible for the property that we're on, okay? Anything outside of it, we're not responsible for, just the lawyer. Now, everybody has their own little, I'm responsible for this, you're responsible for that and stuff. I'm looking at, and you guys think of this situation, right behind Alltown. If you're going into Alltown, look to the left, you've got a retention plot right there, and you've got a little creek that runs under sixty-seven, right? Goes into the river. There's a solar field going up across, up on Quayle Road, the old Cosby's property, or not going in, it's in the workings, what we're doing now, that is behind the condos. This could be ninety-eight acres or something, overall. And that's on, Mrs. Richardson, Marty Richardson knows a lot about it, that's on property that is pretty much a mosh twelve months a year. And when that's denuded, because they can denude it, clear cut it, and put it in, where's that water going to go? John Lee's has got three nice little beaver ponds behind him, a couple ponds and a creek, and everything else that runs through and runs through, right, and comes down. We're going to have a raging river. Engineers don't care, it's not their property. We can have water tests done to show the soil, as Mrs. Richardson knows, we had talked about it, ninety-eight car to hold it, what is the compactability, what's the type of soil? How much water can soil hold before it becomes wet? Water just pours out, and it lays on the top of it because it can't absorb it. These companies don't care, because it's not within their sight, my engineers and my soil engineers within my ninety-eight acres, eighty acres, wherever the case may be, says it's not going, not going to affect them. It's going to run off. We have retention plots, we have swales, okay? We can divert water, situations on Reed Street, okay? We can divert water. How far can we go? I'll be in soon, the boys will be in soon, we'll be soon, probably in a week. John's sitting back there, oh, he did it again. No, we denied it, okay? I said, I said about twenty minutes ago, you're going to pay for it, guys.
You know, it's the scariest part when you talk about that, talk about it, I should say, talk about it. Yes, the first thing that I think of, the old schools that have solar panels on top of the roofs. Yeah, we jumped the gun, we didn't look into it, and God help us, if something goes up down the road, they say it's hazardous, and it leaks, and whatever. Somebody's going to be pointing a lot of fingers, and everybody's going to be running under a lot of buses.
Yep. We can only be proactive, believe me, folks, between the committee, the people to my right, and the board over the years, we've been proactive to protect the town from being taken over in leaps and bounds, okay? We can't bring business in here, we can only offer what we have. We've been trying to do that, believe me, and we've been trying to protect the town from this.
I just want to reinforce, this, this solar bylaw that passes, it doesn't affect anything that's already here, or anything that's already in front of us, it only affects anybody who submits a permit after and if it's already in this bylaw, which is unfortunate. Be nice if we could make it retroactive, because we see a lot of places, it'd be good to make stormwater stay on site for instance.
So, you say it doesn't affect anything retroactive, what if, for instance, the golf course changes anything?
They already have a permit on it. They have the permit on it.
Their grandfather, their grandfather, their grandfather did.
So it's an existing use now, so the next owner gets the benefit of the existing use. No change to use, if it exists. So say you build an apartment house, a section of town, you're able to put it on a small lot, but then the zoning changes, you can no longer build an apartment house on a small lot, and still have your apartment house, the next person who buys your apartment house can still have your apartment house as an apartment house. They can't build apartments on it, and if they get us torn down, if they want to rebuild, it hasn't the same footprint, if I...
But if I buy an apartment house, I have to bring that apartment house, that apartment house has to be under a crew.
You don't have to tear it down, it's on, it's on a lot, it wouldn't be crewed now, it's a lot, but it was built when it was, would be a lot, you don't have to tear it down from the apartment house just because the zoning's changed.
Codes and bylaws are separate things. So to touch on that, if they apply for modifications that are permitted?
Brand new, brand new law, it's like, when they start here, when they want to...
But based on what they're building, right? So if it's a modification, it's based only on what they're building, it doesn't have anything to do with a lot of what exists here. So for instance, a lot of this has to do with the zone that it's in, and if they're maybe changing out the panels, so it really depends on what they're doing, what type of work they're doing.
But we can't hold them to the new bylaw?
We wouldn't be able to hold them to a stringent, this same thing, right? I mean, it's very, it's very similar to, if you were to renovate, you bought a house before nineteen seventy-five, you fall into a very basic building code and fire code. If you were to renovate that and do a substantial renovation to that property, you would then fall under the new code. So it depends on what you're doing to the property, it depends on how you're touching it, it depends on how you're modifying it, it's going to depend on what bylaw or code you're going to fall under. If you leave it as is, you're going to fall under the least stringent of the codes, you know, of the property.
The planning board has, I write, to determine if it's a major change. We determine through a peer review, they will tell us what's going on, then we'll look at it, and it determines if it'd be a major change in the existing plan, okay? The existing plan, if it's a major change... change, we all come back into public hearings and we all go through a process again. Okay? We've had some changes made as plans have moved on, right? And they've downsized and sent out the peer review and they give back, these would not be considered major changes. These are adjustments within the scope of what they're doing. Okay?
However, if they-
So if they want to expand.
Expanding? No, you have a footprint, just like the house, what Terry just said. You got a, you got a footprint.
If they wanted to bring in battery storage on an existing table, that's a huge change.
The rail and the ballgame.
There are, those types of things are covered, would be covered because it would open up another whole public hearing.
If they wanted to move four sets of panels to make the turnaround big enough for the chief of fire truck, that's not a major change. You want to put them somewhere else in the field.
What's, what's the vote on the bylaw? Four fifths?
Two thirds.
How much?
Two thirds.
Two thirds.
Two thirds. Probably more reason to get it. What's the next step? Where's the publicity? We don't even have the press here. How do we do it?
Do it in the paper? Do it on the TV screen? I mean, I, you know.
You've got, Nick, you know through past experience, you've got to have your public hearings.
Word now.
This is all, this is all combat. Their time, Roy, let us this. Tonight is the public hearing prior to, to let people know what there is here, what we're proposing. Through word of mouth, there are handouts that will be available, Terry, in the offices, public offices upstairs. I'll, we'll get some down to the senior center and we'll have that that way. Then we'll go into the newspapers with it that's based on the public hearings and the moratorium committee and with the planning board, the bylaws, changes for solar will be presented on the floor. So that'll start after tonight, but you go through the process after we all got to go through to get to that point.
It'd be nice if when people were made aware, all of a sudden it just rounds well and everybody goes to town meeting, but you've been to an all-town meetings.
Well, there'll be a lot at this town meeting.
What's that?
There'll be a lot at this town meeting. I'm just worried it isn't going to be here.
Right. It'll be a bit obscure. Well, it's a big part of the budget. It's going to be a part of the budget. All right. So are, are there any more questions this evening?
How unique is what you're doing right now, Massachusetts community?
Uh, there are a growing number of towns who are writing bylaws and we are not unique. Maybe to the extent that we wrote this bylaw is unique. We've got a lot of the language from a budding town's bylaws and we put it together as well as we enhanced it a little bit.
Uh, 351 towns, how many would you say have some kind of?
They either have bylaws or certain zoning restrictions. So all closer to Boston, they, what I found is that mostly they limited it to 100 acre property, which means they could only have maybe two solar projects. And they just did that right away. So our solar district is right here. I don't want to see it. So Dover, Wellesley, those kinds of towns, I went, that was the first town, those are the first towns in All-Town. How do they handle it? And mostly they were limiting it. And then around our area, towns that are comparable to ours, slowly started creating bylaws and then enhancing them each year.
Central Mass Regional Planning Council's there, seminar agreement, 516. I've been going for years. Thank you to Peter Grazek, a member of the board. He's still involved, even though he's not on board. Becky Asara had, had gone while she worked with the board. I was at the last one. 320 towns were represented right here in Holy Cross. And the majority of the seminars is all this. Sold. The majority of the towns, approximately two-thirds of those towns, towns now, are all rewriting, writing and jumping through hula hoops to, to get it done. They have been beat up. They have been slammed down and everything else. They're tired of it. They want it. They're trying to do it. Questions and answers. Everybody in the seminar that gives the seminar are lawyers. So they've opened the door to reach out to them. They opened the door by verbiage, how to look at it. And when you sit down and, and, you know, I give the name of quite a few times, Bill Scanlon, he has helped us. He has worked with C M R B C, whether we like him or not. We have had a strong, a strong emphasis on the bylaws for solar. You try to be proactive the whole time. And Joyce was said and Richard said, and we've all, we'll all allude to it. They've got the, they've got the husk power. They've got interns that can sit and research and do whatever they want, and they'll come back at a, at another angle at you. 360 degrees on a compass, you try to cover them all and they're shooting at you from 278, 278 and a half or whatever. They know how to do it. We can only do so much. Everybody to my right tonight has had great answers and put, they've all learned, ladies in the, in the audience, folks in the audience have all learned by having, by looking at it, see how hard it is to do this. And with the towns that are coming up, the emphasis now is actually turning from the outskirts and going into the inner belt. Conversation has ensued that where is more the, more of the energy needed? Coastally. Because everybody migrates to the coast, you've got more buildings going up, you've got more interference going up. They want to stop putting all of the industrial parks now. On top of all these industrial parks, look at all the acreage in industrial parks on the roof. If they can put them on the schools and we can put them on a house, they're going to do it on inside, inside the 495 though. You're not going to see Wellesley and Loon look like Warren, obviously, the money. Yet, when you get to these, these industrial parks and these big malls, you're going to see solar panels on top of them because that's where the law is.
Well, that's where the new incentive program will probably be heading. So when the smart program closes out, they're going to redesign the incentives so more, those will occur in the Boston area.
Did you notice one of the things that was stricken out in the bylaws is the language ground mounted. It's easy for that because we discussed the fact that there could be some potential properties that could decide to move and make them in a non-residential setting, make them a commercially available array, rates complex, other places like that. So if we limit it into ground mounted, we allow them to potentially build on top of roofs and stuff like that, they can still have it as a commercial array. You know, do I think that would happen because of the fire load and the ability? No. But we did address that specifically so that that was covered as well and that language is taken out. And, you know, you've got to realize that, you know, there are, Warren is a prime target. Towns like Warren are a prime target. We have a lot of the land, you know, that they're, that they're looking at. There's, they have people that are caught in tax delinquent properties and, you know, leave a carrot in front of their face and they'll pay the taxes on it if they give us access to land. They look at options of creating subdivisions where they can put one or two homes in and have access to, you know, land in the backyard. All these things are going to be there. So, you know, out metroway, the land isn't there. You don't have, you know, you're built up and have the land to be able to build on. So you're seeing all this focus come out this way. And that's why almost all the towns around us, like Joyce said, have entertained the moratorium to this point. Because everyone's playing catch-up because this is part of the state, the birth years are all being, you know, sought after for their land. Everybody's scrambling to do exactly what we've been trying to do the last three months.
Thank you for coming out. Very much.
Thank you for having me.